On May 27, 2025 at 12:03. It's great to have everyone here. And we'll start with the pledges of allegiance led by Heather Copeland. Everyone will please stand and then we'll have the invocation by Mr. Mike Wilber.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor to Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to lead Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
If you remain standing for our invocation, please. Heavenly Father, we are indeed grateful that you allow us to gather in a free country. We thank you, Father, for, first of all, for those men and women who gave their lives. We thank you for this time of year that we can recognize that. And we ask, Father, that you be with those men and women in our service and our first responders and keep them safe. Pray, Father, that you would guide our decisions that we might make the right decision for the students of our district. For our names usually ask you. Amen.
Amen.
And now Mrs. Sherri Hoppe-Towne will read the mission statement for us.
All right. The mission of Coppers Cove ISD is to provide exceptional opportunities for each student through exemplary instruction which inspires academic success, personal excellence, and responsible citizenship.
Thank you. Now we have citizens' comments on agenda items. No, nobody has signed up. Our next item is consideration to hire professional personnel.
Yes, ma'am. As you know, we've got several positions open in the district. Remarkably, a very low turnover at this point. I think the kids of Cove is very well blessed by that. We've had a low teacher turnover rate thus far, but we do have some positions open. I know that I got a couple of characters that I'm going to get to work with tomorrow and the next day on the fine arts director position. And then, but we have-
But you will have some nice people on that committee as well, right?
I think so.
Okay.
You better attend our session, Joan. That's how I work. You'll be in Hawaii first.
So we will, I'm going to defer to Ms. Crowley. She has went through the process with the May principal. And Ms. Peacock, as you know, has been installed as the principal of that campus. And then this is the Coppers Cove junior high principal process that she'll talk about that we'll, that we'll work through.
We have the, we have the privilege of interviewing. We invited four candidates to interview out of the pool with us, and three were able to confirm and attend. Of those three candidates, we felt like one shined above the rest and had some good experience. And so it was, it was a very tough decision with regard to our applicants. And so, but, but the committee felt strongly that one, one candidate stood above the rest. And so Mr. Roger McNeil is a current principal at an elementary campus in Huntsville ISD. He has been a high school associate principal and high school assistant principal and a fifth grade math teacher. And so he has some really great experience to draw from and upon. And that is the committee's recommendation to the board, Dr. Hopkins.
So, Ms. Crowley- Let me just say, I thank you for going through these last two processes just from the standpoint of, I think that she brings something to the table that I don't have in that regard, and that is she is very well versed in what they're trying to accomplish in curriculum from a curriculum standpoint, instructional leader standpoint, and she has institutional knowledge that, that I'm still learning in the district. And so to give up time to, to go through that process, I appreciate Amanda's work on that.
We did have, I will say, I'll throw Cliff in there with me. Cliff was on the committee as well as Marshall Chauvin, our other secondary principal at the junior high level. And like I said, it was, it was a great applicant pool, and we felt really, really good about the recommendation that we put forward.
All right. Any questions? Does Mr. McNeil have any experience with capturing kids' hearts?
He does. He does. He talked about capturing kids' hearts and quite a few other things that we have going on here. He had some good knowledge and great, I want to say ideas, but things that he had implemented and was ready to talk about what that would look like here as well. He also has some background with campuses who are, you know, struggling academically and moving them forward and working through that process with some turnaround work. And so it was, it was really, it was a really good visit that we got to have with him.
When will we start?
Well, he, he has accepted the offer contingent on y'all's approval, then we will call him and say he's official and try to see when he can get here as soon as possible because he will have to hire an AP there as well. And so right now, his teaching staff is in pretty good shape. We don't have any glaring holes or anything in that, in that regard, but the AP role will be necessary that he comes in. And so it's my hope that he will come in in the next week or two.
How many internal candidates?
We have one internal candidate that we, that we selected.
How many internal candidates applied?
Four.
I, I have a concern with the, with the junior high, and that's with continuity of leadership. They haven't had an assistant, you know, how long have they been with the assistant principal?
Yeah. I have one, Mr. Crowe Wilber, probably January.
Yeah, it was before I got in.
Yeah. And my other, my other concern is, you know, unlike S.C. Lee, you know, the junior high is, say, 10, 10 years back, 2016. How many principals have they had? Six?
Randy Traub, me, Billy White.
And Jeff.
Jeff.
And so, well-
Mr. Turner.
Mr. Turner.
And Mr. Turner.
Aaron.
Let's see, check.
No.
No? Okay. So five in the last 10 years. We have, we got, I mean, we've asked this before about commitment to the organization. So was that question asked by the committee?
We did. We talked about, you know, the tenure of this particular individual in Huntsville ISD. He's been there for many years and has promoted, you know, from teacher to, to elementary principal now.
How many years as an elementary principal was he?
One. One at elementary principal. I'm sorry, and I didn't bring the resume in front of me, but high school AP and associate, quite a few years.
How long was he associate principal, do you know?
I don't. I, and I'm sorry, Curtis, did you happen to have that with you? I have, yeah.
Curtis, a concern, right?
Yeah.
I mean, 10 years for that campus to go through five different leaders, multiple assistant leaders.
He's originally a graduate of Mahalia High School. He has a master's from La Barre, a bachelor's from San Diego State. And the question was, he's been an elementary principal this year and AP and associate for four years at the high school. So AP to associate in that four-year span.
One good thing about that school, though, they have the, the best scores of either one of the junior highs, do they not?
Uh huh.
Jeff's been there. I mean, he's been there and he's been a great leader.
And he stabilized her.
And he stabilized everything. So it's not like there's instability over there.
Right.
No, I'm just pointing out the fact of continuity.
Yeah.
Right? We've, we've asked a question before of, of our leaders, how long are you going to be here? We've had folks, I mean, five and 10 years to me an extreme. And, you know, I would, I would expect our committee to ask that question or he committed to the organization for more than two because we've asked it before. That wasn't adhered to. And that's, that's my concern. I mean, we're going to, are we two years down the road or three years down the road, are we going to be looking for another principal?
I, I don't think there's really any way to, to judge that because I've had people tell me that, hey, this is my dream job. This is the only job I'll ever want. And six months later, they're in that dream job and they're applying everywhere for another job.
I concur, but it's still a consideration, right? And it's still worris, it's worrisome for me, right? It's worrisome for me. That campus has gone through a significant number of, of leaders in the last decade across the board. And yes, the scores are high in spite of the transition-
That says a lot about the teachers that are there.
I can, yeah, absolutely. Right? You know, and I know we've had folks holding down the fort that have been short on manning. So all I'm saying is, you know, I expect a little bit of continuity and commitment to the staff and the students of that campus.
Jeff, from a continuity standpoint, the, if we approve this guy, you're going to give him the opportunity to choose his new AP because there's one AP position.
Yes.
And from a continuity standpoint, hopefully we'll get some applications within the district that understand our district, that might bubble to the top in an interview to get that job as far as AP for continuity's sake.
Well, I think that number one, we've already hired Mr. Cotton. And so he's within the district. And, and so he's, he's signed up to go. And there, are there two or three, Tracy's not here, there's two or three other AP openings that internal candidates are recommended for at this time.
Okay.
So that would be four internal AP candidates that we hope to, you know, get through the process.
Three, three have been recommended so far that are internal for AP.
Right.
And then we're still waiting on a couple of the other interviews to finish up. I did know that Mr. McNeil has been in Huntsville since 2012. And so he's very stable in Huntsville ISD as well. Prior to that, he was in Willis ISD for three years. That's where he began his two-year career.
Oh, 12 years.
So he, he is not someone that-
He doesn't profile on his, on his resume as a job hopper.
No, not at all.
Okay.
And was it, Jeff brought it up, was that same question asked when the AP interviews about what's your commitment to the district? How long are you staying? You know, they, I think that's, we're just making a great point because we do want that commitment. And Dr. Hopkins opened this up with, hey, we had very little turnover, which means people are happy here. The culture is good and we aren't going to get a huge turnover. And you have a commitment to Coppers Cove Independent School District.
He did talk about wanting to bring his children here because of the academics and, and he was very excited about the, the, you know, the educational opportunities that are here that he doesn't have in his current district for his family.
We'd be hoping he'd bring his children here.
That's why he was asking.
Yeah. That's true.
Yeah, that's, and I know we laugh about that, but that's probably uncommon today. You know, everywhere that I served, my kids went to school. And that's not-
That's not common.
That's not the norm anymore.
Well, that's, that's really not right if you're going to, well, I won't go there.
I concur with you.
Mike, I understand that from a, from a military standpoint, depending on what grade your kid is in. And if, if your kid's a junior, going to be a senior and dad gets moved to another place, okay, so you're going to leave that kid there to graduate from that same high school he's been going to for three years. So, you know, I don't, maybe that's a factor too someplace, but in a lot of cases, it wasn't. In my wife's case, her dad got restationed, so she graduated from high school after one, one year when she spent three years at another high school.
Well, that's a different situation when, when the army moves you.
But, you know, that, that's still a factor that could, could be, could play into somebody moving if they've got a, a senior that next year in Huntsville High School and they wanted to graduate from Huntsville High School and been going there for three years. You might leave them with some friends, you know, say, hey, you graduated from Huntsville.
Well, understand that.
Well, we never know what's-
He's not going to move from Huntsville, though.
I can just tell you that I'm, I'm old school in a lot of respects and, and I just, over 32 years, I've watched a lot of folks and I, I still think that when you're a principal level or above, your kids need to go to school where you're at. Because if you don't, it causes problems.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I, I had a person that I mentored that became a superintendent. And in doing so, he was never a principal. And I told him, I said, at some point, that's going to cause you problems. And, and it did. And I think that, that's a, something that I try to give folks good advice, sound, sound advice on. And the same thing, when you're a principal level or above, it's, you kids really need to go to school where you work, but it's, it's not, it's not always that way.
If I may interject, you know, one of the questions we specifically asked in Black Coppers Cove, and he spoke very highly of academic programs. He had done his research and looked at technical reports, not in five areas in need. But he, you know, he just spoke very highly of the district in general. And, you know, as a father, he wanted, he's choosing his family to be a part of our community. And the same individual has had the opportunity to continue his career in Huntsville ISD. And he's made the decision that this is where I want my family to be, this is where I want to work. And those, those things spoke very well to me in regards to considering him for a candidate.
That sounds like a smart guy, doesn't it?
Yeah. And there's lots of houses for sale right now, so he should be able to promise.
That's the same thing. I think that, that our administrative staff should live in our district because if, if we're voting and they're recommending things for our tax rate and everything, they should pay the same tax rate that our constituents pay.
Well, you know, I've served in districts where that was district policy. You know, now they've kind of got away from that because, you know, like when I interviewed from my former job, you know, that was one of the things that they asked. And they did say that, that they wanted you to live within like 10, 15 minutes.
Yeah, some of those districts don't have no housing availability.
Well, and there's lots of little, in East Texas, there's lots of little fingers of, of the way those boundaries are. And you can, it's kind of like here. I mean, you can, you can be in-
Top of the hill in Lampastas.
Coppers Cove City and Lampastas ISD, you know? And so there's a lot of that that happens in East Texas. So I think a lot of districts went away from that policy because of stuff like that.
All right. Any other questions, concerns?
We got chasing our act, didn't we?
Yeah, kind of. We will go ahead and vote to hire Mr. McNeil.
I move we accept the recommendation.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Wilber, a second by Mr. Gallin. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The motion carries. We have a couple of superintendent updates, first on professional personnel.
Professional personnel, I think I've kind of hit on some of that, just kind of where we are with staffing. But the one thing that I did want to say is that Ms. Kristy Thompson will be reassigned to assistant athletic director. When Coach Southern came in, he was the boys' athletic director. And I'll talk a little bit more about this legislative session. And we are having to make sure that we are very exceptional stewards of the taxpayers' dollars. And so we will no longer have a standalone athletic director. Coach Southern will, has assumed those athletic director, the entire athletic director title as Coach Lowry retired. That wasn't exactly the plan, but if you pick up a copy of the paper today in any of the large metropolitan areas, if you look on texasisd.com, you can see that there's a lot of school districts that's having to consolidate campuses, shut campuses down and do things different. And so this is just all part of the pain that, that we're having from a school's finance standpoint. And so Coach Southern will be the athletic director and he will be the head football coach. Coach Thompson will be the assistant athletic director and she will still continue to coach volleyball. And she's a very solid employee for us in the district, and I think this is a great opportunity for her. It's a great opportunity for Coach Southern, and it's a great opportunity for the district. As you know, we have shifted that FTE over into the fine arts director position too. So we're not expanding staff by doing those things. So I just wanted everybody, you know, publicly know that. And we'll be making changes on the, on the website and things like that in the coming days.
She, she kind of led the facilities, you know, for our last athletic director, she was in charge of facilities. So if you needed to know something about whatever you would call Ms. Thompson, and she was very good. She was definitely on top of what was going on with our facilities and keeping up with all the schedules and everything. So I have a lot of confidence in her, just working with her for a little while. She's done a real good job with that. And I'm sure that was just a small step and she got for that job, but it was a big job.
And she would be here today, but she's with her daughter on an out-of-state trip.
Oh, that's good. Okay. All right. Now we'll have the update, unless there's any questions, we'll have an update on the legislative session. If you can give it to us in less than three hours.
I'm going to make this the five B, be brief, brother, be brief, because the, the thing with legislative session, it, it continues to change. And I'm not going to spend a lot of laborious time in it because it is so encompassing and so much and so many moving pieces at the moment. And we will do a podcast once sign die occurs. In essence, there's six more days left in this legislative session. Sign die occurs on June the 2nd. This morning, there's 100, this is the 134th day of a very painful legislative session, and there are currently 700 bills that have passed at this time. These bills are right, right, range everywhere from Senate Bill 13, which is the school library bill. And my brief brushing through that bill is, is that now librarians will have less control over the circulation in their libraries. That responsibility will come to you as a board. It can be petitioned to like a school health advisory committee, except this would be a library advisory committee on purchasing of library books. And I say that right now, I'm just making y'all aware because as I've told y'all, I've worked with lots of school boards, especially when I was deputy director of the service center. And y'all put in an untold amount of hours and commitment to the kids of this school district. And, and so here's something else that you are tasked with. And now some of those districts that aren't working as much, those trustees will have to pick up or petition for that to be delegated to someone else. But nonetheless, it'll kind of be like a book review policy of ensuring that purchases made are aligned with the community standards in which the community we serve. There's also Senate Bill 3, you know, the, the ban on THC that, that has dominated a whole lot of talk and conversation and horse trading throughout the legislative process. The, the others, as you know, the voucher bill has passed. The governor has signed that billion-dollar bill into law. And so that will be the, a, a change for districts from a lot of different paradigms. Competing for kids, for, from what services do you offer? I mean, there are potential services that you could offer for homeschool kids in, in the community, that you can à la carte services out to them now, giving parents more opportunities to choose. The, the bill that's still lingering out there right now is House, House Bill 4. That bill is the through, through-year accountability system, through-year testing system that we have, that I think may not be perfect, but it is a great step in the right direction if that thing will pass. I think it will afford some things to parents and teachers and students and districts that should have been done anyway. We, we've kind of had our ladder on the wrong wall for a long time. No one has ever asked me about a kid that we had that goes out and gets a job and said, hey, what was his tax, tax score, his indecor score or his star score? It's irrelevant, you know, as far as from a, from a business standpoint. And so I think that it, it takes a step to make the assessments valid and, and relevant to what, to what needs to be done in education. But the big bill, as you know, is House Bill 2 that went to the Senate committee. And in my, in my opinion, that bill is unconstitutional. The, the money is being prepped and, and sold to the public, that it is the largest infusion of money in the history of public education in the state of Texas. It's eight, over $8 billion. But you got to remember that last, the last biennium, there was no billion dollars. There was nothing. And so, you know, normally they would have been on track to put about four and put about four more in there. And so really, it just bottlenecked money and rolled it in there. Does the bill do some good things? Absolutely. But I think at the end of the day, it is a poison pill because it doesn't put us back to the 2019 inflationary standpoint of where we were as a district in 2019. We're expecting more out of students, staff and, and assessments than what we did in 2019, but yet we're paying considerably less for them. And I think the crux of it is this, is they say, look at the money that we give. And here's the thing that should be concerning for you as a trustee, for you as a community member. A few years back, this district, this community voted for a tax ratification election. And that tax ratification election, there, that allowed what the courts ruled as meaningful discretion. It allowed a community meaningful discretion of what funding for schools were. And so there was different tiers of funding in those 13 pennies that was out there. There was a yield of penny that was yielded on the Coppers Cove tax rate. There was a yield of penny that was yielded on the Dallas ISD tax rate, which that's called the copper penny. And then there was the holy grail of funding, that was the golden pennies. That golden penny yield was what Austin ISD's, it was linked to Austin ISD's tax rate. And so you have a lot of property poor districts that was allowed meaningful discretion in using that as the yield on those pennies to drive things that went on that was funded by the trustees of the district for supplemental and enhancement enrichment activities for kids. And so since that time, most districts have tapped all those things out. And this bill, House Bill 2, caps, it's not even true, it doesn't cap it, it absconds it. It takes the money from that Austin ISD yield away and says, guess what? Here's $55 a student in the basic allotment. So what I tell people is this, I had three girls. If I took them to Wal-Mart and they had earned $5, and I told them, hey, give me the $5, and I handed them five ones back and said, you can only spend $1 per aisle, they would not be very happy with me. Because in essence, I took $5 and I'd give them $5, and then I restricted the way that they can spend that money. And so that's the same thing with House Bill 2. They took the golden pennies away, they give them back to you, but then they said, you can only spend it in these pots or these venues here. So with, with that said, I, I think that that is concerning, that there's no meaningful discretion. And I think that the heroes two years ago was you as a board of trustees and the other 7,000 board members across the state that dipped into fund balance, that didn't balance their budgets, that said, hey, we're going to do the right thing, we're going to continue to pay our employees, we're going to continue to make sure that our programs and services are cut. And now it gets to the point of where you can't continue to do that. And so it was time for the state to step up and ensure that that didn't happen. Well, that didn't happen. And so I think that's why you see Fort Worth ISD closing down 18 schools, you see Love County ISD closing down two schools, you see lots of different districts. And there was one, West Houston- west Houston that had a $30 million deficit budget, and the, and the runs on this thing puts it in the standpoint of where it looks like that they're gonna be able to generate about 13 million, so there's $17 million in cuts coming down the pipe. And so I think it's just concerning, concerning from a standpoint of that we're not gonna be able to be fiscally responsible and continue to meet all the needs that, that we can meet as a public education community, and so...
Throughout the state.
Yes.
Right, throughout the state.
So, we, we hope that that public education community throughout the state will become very active in, in making sure that the need narrative is put out there so that the public can digest what's, what's going on for the next biennium. Any questions about any of that?
Yeah, my one question is, I, you know, I've, I've watched some of the podcasts from our fellow regions around here, right, Midway and Temple, and it's, it's interesting to signalized the emotion, right? But emotion only gets you so far. I think one question that I have is if we have the answer, is how many years ago did the state mandate dyslexia as far as special ed? Yeah, so, do we know what our deficit is for that mandate? Because the state only is providing, what, 1.8 billion towards special ed? How far behind is that?
The number that I saw in special ed is we're pretty balanced right now.
For us?
Yes.
Right, but I, I think it goes towards the victory, to talk about the state, right? The state says, hey, dyslexia has to be counted as special ed, so it requires testing, right? Assessments, obviously people across the board, and I haven't been able to find, I haven't been able to get anybody to answer, to include your illustrious task B, what that deficit is on HB 4.
So, I, I don't have everybody's runs, but I think the deficit is not coming from dyslexia, it's coming from the Shar's loss of federal fundings. And so whatever Shar's rate that you were at, in theory, the way that this bill is written is that special ed is funded based on the intensity of services. So a student that was receiving Shar's funding for a medically fragile kid would be funded at a greater rate than a student that was just maybe OHI, other health impaired. And so, there'll be different weights of different fundings for different kids, but I expect that it will fill the coffers of the Shar's deficits that we've had in the past, which I think we've kind of fleshed through, about $600,000 split somewhere along. So, there's about $600,000 of fundings that's been, that the district had to pick up, that now the state will pour money into that pot.
Isn't that a reimbursable expense, though?
It, it was.
So they painted it forward now, but the, yes, the, the problem with that reimbursement is, is that the feds and the state was at odds on the qualifications of that. And the state's lost. Of course.
What else?
That's enough. Once, once the legislative session is over and all the bills are signed and all that, at SLI, we will, we're gonna, we'll stick around, we'll get the, the task B, whatever it is, update, won't we?
Well, we have to have a legislative update.
Well, legislative update.
You, you will get a legislative update, but let me just caution you, caution you about that legislative update. There's winners and losers.
Oh, yeah.
And I, I think anybody that's doing an update has a tendency to like, put a nice lipstick on a pig, and, and I think the, the problem with it is this, is that there are some definite losers in this bill. For an example, districts above 5,000 students, okay? In my opinion, what happened was some horse trading, and I've spent a lot of my career in small rural districts, okay? And I, and I love those districts, they're, they're small-town atmosphere, they're the center, and some, in instances, they're the very existence of that community staying even on the map. But those districts have been very opposed to vouchers. And so, they also represent most of the, over 100 counties in the state that has no option for private schooling. So, this finance bill was a, was money that pushed harder to those districts. It was kind of like, thank you support, for supporting us, now here's your prize reward for doing so, because they get $8,000 a teacher where we get five? Okay? So, that, that alone is substantial funding that goes into those districts' coffers that we weren't getting. You can't say it's because the, the larger districts pay more, because that's a fantasy. We, we can prove that, that's what they try to say, but that's a false narrative. But they also got an addition to the midsize and small, small school adjustments in the funding template itself. So, be very critical of what you hear in unified organizations, because they're gonna try to blanket the good news for everybody, when like I said, there's some poison pills in there and some things that don't, that really put somebody's toe on the scale a little bit for other people.
Well, hopefully the task B update, legislative update, will be pretty transparent and just do exactly what you said, maybe not, because Jeff's been very skeptical and we have to, we've sat through those things, and you're right, putting lipstick on a pig and making it sound great, you know, yeah, but there's winners and there's losers, and hopefully it'll be a little more transparent when we see this. And of course, TEA is gonna make some rules too, after all this is done, and we've waited for rules from TEA. Now let me address the, the library issue.
Now, John knows, but there's been TEA representatives that's been part of those...
Yeah, yeah, they, they've got a whole form of people that sit there and give us the task B, TEA, and all that. Let's talk about the library thing. I sit on the library advisory board for the city too, and we may be able to pick up some information from them if we have to do that as a board interpreting what books can be bought for school libraries and things like that. The Copper's Cove librarian, we've gone through the throes, we've got, he's got a policy, we've got a policy that's been approved by the city council and all that, and you talk about community values, and, and he can, we might, we might benefit from having you come in and talk a little bit about that if we have to make some of those rulings.
We, we have a policy to contest books.
Yes.
But this is policy for purchasing books.
Purchasing, yeah.
And so this, this will be a little bit different, because I, I think where the, the problem started with that, the librarians have been painted awfully unfairly, because what happens is a librarian, if they get $4,000 on their campus to buy books, when you buy in bulk, you get a better price. So if I had $4,000 and I could make five bulk purchases, I'm liable to get 100 books. But if I bought each one of those books and I went in and selected it individually, I may only get 50 books. So, the 30-book advantage that I got right there was because I bought this package of books. I opened up my website and I looked, and here's the Bluebonnet award-winning books, and so I clicked on that. Now I haven't read all those books, but I just bought them as a package, and so they come into the libraries. And once those, they come into the libraries, there were some books that were probably not appropriate for every child in every household in a lot of communities, probably the majority of communities. I'm hopeful that it was the majority of communities across the state, but it become a target for people to say, look at this filth that's in your libraries. Well, y'all, we've all got a cellphone sitting here right now, and it doesn't take much to open up your cellphone and see stuff that really inappropriate, and, and kids everywhere's got cellphones, and so, we got a lot of problems in society. I, I think that one was exacerbated some to be bigger than what it really was, because I know that even in some of those districts, that they restricted some of those books, because you can't, once you buy them, then you can't just go book burn, right? And so they restricted access to them and had to have parent permission to get to those books and things like that, but nonetheless, we, we're continuing to see the librarian format of purchasing books as the big bad.
There, there wasn't, was there some punitive stuff in there on, on school librarians? Because that's been an issue too that we've discussed. You've got community standards, and, and that's, that's what the, the community librarian, we talk about community standards and, and what books are acceptable in the library, and then, then of course you've got the First Amendment right too, that has been attacked a little bit, and there was something that I read about, they were making school librarians the bad person, and they could get prosecuted and things like that for just messing up. So now, you're saying that the bill is pushing it on, we're making the decision as a board, which is, which is fine if we, if we have to, or set up a library advisory board or whatever we have to do.
It's in the bill, so it's gonna have to be.
Yeah, well, yeah, it's, it's in there. Did, did, is it gonna say, set up a library advisory board, or it just says, we're...
Well, it's like cellphones. It's like cellphones. I mean, that bill is streaming down the aisle right now, that it looks like that that's gonna become law.
Yeah.
So, a total ban of cellphones. So, there's, there's lots of chromebooks on the way.
You know, bottom line on, on the librarian thing, right? It's, it's a sad commentary on our, our society, because, you know, I can, you know, look back into situations that we've had within our own district, and situations I know of, none of them occurred by the librarians, right? One was a paraprofessional and one was a brand-new teacher, right? None of them were librarians that occurred. Again, one was a paraprofessional and one was a librarian that, that brought, introduced stuff to elementary kids that should not have been introduced, period, simple, right? And I would hope most of our, all of our parents would, would agree with me. And just on, my comment on the, the different levels of rural districts versus urban districts, right, is, I hear ya, right? The, you should say quid pro quo, whatever the case may be, but it goes without saying that, you know, our rural districts are suffering from recruiting challenges, right? They do get paid less than our urban folks.
No, no, we get the same amount of revenue. We're all on a fixed income. The, the deal with the rural...
No, I, I, okay, there are rural districts that I know, because folks that I know that are reaching out and implying, they start off their teachers a lot less than we start off. I, I hear ya, no, I, I got you, right? But it's, the state is trying to address that as one issue for recruitment.
Sure, but I'm not interested...
But let me ask you this question. Who made the choice for that teacher to be paid at state base? If, if we all get X number of dollars per kid that comes into the district, and that school board in that district made a choice for those teachers to be paid less, and they made the choice for those additional revenues to go into something else?
I concur, right? You said the district, right? The trustees, right? So guess, and the state is saying, enough of this...
Handcuffed you, you gotta do this.
You can't do that anymore, right? There are failing districts all through this, we can pick up the newspaper across the board. There's a lot of frustration on public education success. You talk about schools being closed, Spring, Texas, Tomball, Tomball, right? Because trustees have decided to take that allotment and focus on our things other than what I consider educational instruction. Bottom line is, I mean, regardless of what happens, it's gonna happen, folks are gonna have to deal with it across the board. The legislature's saying, you know what, rural districts, you're gonna get this money, you fix your man, we're gonna help you fix your manning, but you're not spending the money on anything else other than pay, right? Pay across the board.
Yeah, it's just that, that money that they chose to spend elsewhere is still being spent elsewhere.
I concur.
And I want it spent elsewhere for the kids' copper's code.
I, 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 yes.
That's where I always come back to, is the loyalty to this district and that, you know, and...
But we suffer success because of prudent choices in the last 20 years, right? We suffer success for prudent decisions in the last 20 years, specifically, I'm gonna say in the last decade, right? Unfortunately, you know, we can't project our success and project our vision on other folks, right? We're, we're gonna have to deal with whether the bill passes as it is, as $5,000 per student paid, as long as the basic allotment. Now that is unfortunate, they, they couldn't come to a greater compromise versus the 400, or 395 or 55, that kind of hamstrings us.
Yeah, because, you know, here, there's dilemmas that everybody's gonna face, and it doesn't matter, it really, it, it intensifies that rural district, because let me show you how. You got $8,000 that you're gonna pay this teacher, but I've also got a diagnostician, I've also got a counselor, I've also got a librarian, I've got all these other folks over here that at the end of the day, it's gonna motivate them to go back into the classroom, and who's gonna be a diagnostician?
Well, say with TIA? TIA motivated folks to go back in the classroom, right?
Right. You know? I mean, but, but if the gap is $8,000 in that rural district, now the mountain is even higher to get Jeff to keep his speech-language pathologist job instead of going back into the classroom.
And those other ones are needed also, those other physicians.
Absolutely, by federal law.
It'd be interesting to see what the, what the turnover of teachers in rural districts is versus urban districts, because some of the, the rural districts have a pretty tight-knit, if they're a lot smaller community, it's pretty tight-knit and those people stay there, but you know, and I understand what you're saying, Jeff, it is a recruiting tool, obviously, to try and keep teachers or move people out, what you just said, from time to time, back into the classroom, just like TIA did, you know, get teachers back, because we've heard that a bunch of times, there's a teacher shortage in the state of Texas.
And it's not a retention tool, because the greatest area of retention, zero to three, they don't pay anything for. Recruitment, yeah, again, come, come to our place, but retention-wise, where do we need to put the money? Where they're turning over them, zero to three, but it didn't, for nobody.
The sweet spot, where you get turned over, yeah.
Rural or urban.
And you talked about the bias, maybe, on the legislative update, I'm sure there will be some bias.
Oh, obviously.
But, but two, two weeks ago, I went to a training in, in Waco, because I'm gonna miss SLI, and I got four hours of training, that was really an inexp, real inexpensive training, but I thought I better get that, because I'm gonna miss SLI and miss a lot of hours. So, they had a legislative update, of course it wasn't finished yet, but the man who gave it was very fair about what he talked about, and he asked if there was anyone in there from a district larger than 5,000. I was the only one in there that raised their hand. I was the only large district that was there, and he said, wow, this really hurts y'all. You know, this really, he was just honest about it. He said, it's not fair what they're, what they're planning to do. And of course, he, he mentioned the small and medium adjustment for, for small and, and medium districts that we won't be a part of. So there's a lot of, a lot of money that those rural districts are getting that, that we're not gonna see at all, and it really, I, I don't know, I mean, it's better than 5,000 and 10,000, I guess, like it was at first, but it's still not great.
It's great that we're getting 5,000, right? We're getting something.
It is, and, and the other question is, are we gonna continue to get it? Is this something we're gonna have to...
According to Creighton, Senator Creighton, yeah, it, you're gonna get it, he said, because if you put it in the basic allotment, there wasn't any guarantee to get it. Well, yeah, it's the same guarantee. I mean, the basic allotment has never went backwards. And so, if that money's there, then it will continue to be there, so I don't know where he said, where he got that in, but I think he was a little misinformed. He's not relatively seasoned in his legislative duties, so, anyway...
Nothing's guaranteed, actually, when it comes to that, nothing is.
But, it is what it is.
Anyway, maybe it'll be a good update. I think the ones they give us at task B usually are pretty, pretty decent, so, pretty factual anyway. Unfortunately, we don't like the facts, right? Any other questions there? Okay, if there's nothing else, we will close our meeting at 12:52 PM. Yeah, it is PM. I had to take, just a minute. It's not AM anymore, it's PM, at 12:52 PM. Y'all have a good afternoon and evening, please.